To make a determination that we would do that. I just, I'm concerned about waiting two weeks before we would get the costing back and say, yep, that's a great idea. We should do it. So I'm just not sure what our options are there. I would just like to see it happen sooner than later.
Yeah, and honestly, as I mentioned, this is a research project at this stage in, uh, in the Wolfville region. So, you know, I think, um, it may not even, I guess, step one might be to reach out to find out if there is a possibility of even doing that kind of thing here, given the fact that it is experimental at this time. Any other comments, questions? Okay, um, so I guess I would entertain a motion to have staff do an outreach, uh, on that matter.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a motion that if staff could get us a bit more information on that to, uh, find out what we'd be looking at in order to implement such a solution.
Okay, could I have a second around that motion? Deputy Warden?
Yeah, I'll definitely second that motion.
Okay, thank you. So the motion is to have staff, uh, look into the potential of, um, COVID testing in our, uh, in our sewer wastewater systems. So, um, any further discussion on the matter? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, so moving us right along, um, this is more or less just a statement, uh, that I wanted to make on the record related to broadband. It continues to be top of mind for residents, particularly with COVID cases on the rise and the specter of more shutdowns and how that impacts employment and learning, et cetera. Um, and I wanted to just discuss the fact that we worked with this Cape Breton partnership to set up a meeting with Bell Canada next week to discuss the details of the expanded rollout recently announced by Develop Nova Scotia and how it will impact communities in Richmond County. The coverage maps and completion data are not fully outlined yet on the Develop Nova Scotia website, and that's because once a project is announced, uh, the provider still does need to do engineering and design work in the community in order to develop, uh, a coverage map and timelines. Once those are complete, they will be, uh, posted on the site, but it can take several months. So in the meantime, um, you know, I guess I was looking for, um, I guess consensus commitment from councillors, um, to, you know, to ensure that your residents' concerns are sort of forwarded back to this table. Um, we have already heard from, you know, I personally have heard from folks in the Johnstown area, Grand Gully, the Grandy Road, uh, Cleveland, and in particular Point Tupper in the business park there. Um, and so I guess I would encourage, uh, everyone to sort of, let's bring that information back to the table on areas that are particularly concerned. Um, we do have a meeting coming up with Bell Canada, uh, early next week, um, so it would be a great opportunity to discuss. So is there any other comments or areas of concern that councillors would like to discuss on that? No? Okay, so citizens, let us know your concerns. Okay, and, um, next on our agenda is just an item regarding the Straight Richmond Healthcare Foundation. Um, I wanted to take the opportunity, um, from the seat to congratulate the board and staff at the Straight Richmond Healthcare Foundation on a successful tree lighting ceremony on December third. It was really wonderful to see all of our council there that evening, so, um, so I, I really, it was very, um, heartwarming for me, uh, to be with you at that event. This year was, I, I guess, low-key, I would say, in comparison to usual events, um, due to the COVID pandemic. Um, but it was, uh, wonderful to see the tree lighting, um, you know, in honor of those who have passed in our, in the hospital or from COVID and in honor of all essential workers. It's not easy to bring people together right now and, uh, and to do so safely, and they did. And I want to mention that they've raised millions over the years, uh, to support the hospital and to support better health outcomes for us all. So thank you to the foundation and to the frontline workers and to all the people who continue to support our local hospital. And I don't know if anybody else wanted to say anything about the tree lighting or, or about the foundation, but I'd invite you to do so. Yes, councillor Melanie Sampson?
I would just be remiss if I didn't remind people of their Lights For Light campaign, which is going on right now, where, uh, it's their major fundraiser of the year. And so just encouraging, uh, residents of Richmond County, if they're able to contribute to that. I think the challenge they've put out this year is they've been in operation for forty years and they're looking for maybe a dollar a year. And so if, again, if you're able, uh, just encouraging folks to do that if they can.
Great. Thank you, councillor Melanie Sampson. Any other comments on that? Councillor Sean Sampson?
Yeah, I just want to share your sentiments, uh, Ward Marbriquet, on, on being there that night and, and sharing on, you know, with that great event, you know, having all of us there was an honor to be there with all these great volunteers that do so much hard work for the Straight Richmond, right? So it was, it was great, an honor to be there.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, so seeing none, I'll move us along, um, to a special mention of Port Hoxbury Paper and their eight-year anniversary, uh, this year. Um, they've recently released a stakeholder report, and I just wanted to highlight a couple of items in that report. Um, that, uh, the annual operating expenditures in Nova Scotia for PHP equal about a hundred and seventy million. They've spent about one point four billion in the province since the facility opened just eight years ago, and that's not including employee wages, the impact of which is heavily weighted in eastern, uh, rural Nova Scotia. We, they've created approximately a thousand full-time equivalent jobs with three hundred and twenty-five plus at the mill and about seven hundred in directly related spin-off activities at hundreds of companies across the region. They've become one of the top three Nova Scotia-based exporters shipping through the port of Halifax and have developed a flexible power arrangement to the benefit of the entire electric grid that assists in maximizing the utilization of renewable energy in Nova Scotia. I think I also want to mention, uh, that we see their names supporting many philanthropic causes from hockey tournaments to local festivals. And, um, I'm very fortunate to have them as such good corporate citizens. We have, uh, uh, have extended the invitation to, um, the development manager, Alan Eddy, to come and present to, uh, Richmond County Council in the near future, and, uh, so plans are underway for that. And it would be good to meet, meet representatives from Port Hoxbury Paper in person at that time. Are there any questions or comments, um, from councillors on that? Okay, so hearing none, we'll move us along then. Um, we have a couple of items or one item in particular of correspondence, I think is next on our agenda. And, um, it's from Clint Sampson, Revenue Manager, regarding a letter of authority for access and repair of municipal property for trail use.
So, um, we had a request from the Coastal Riders ATV Association to gain access to municipal property located in their neck of the woods, uh, out in, uh, I believe it's Lordways area. And, uh, apparently there are, there is a trail system out there that, uh, they, they take advantage of and it appears to, go over our property. It appears to be in, in, in need of repair. And so what they've been asking, or what they're, what they are asking us is to provide them with, uh, a letter of authority to access those trails to, to, to repair them. We did get our solicitor to provide us with a, uh, letter of authority. As you can see in the, uh, in the correspondence that was provided by the Revenue Manager. And, uh, hopefully you folks had a chance to review that. And, uh, we're looking at, uh, providing them with the letter of authority, based on your approval, uh, to go ahead and make those repairs to those, uh, areas of the, of the trail, the trail system. We had, uh, a bit of, the request came, uh, a while back, but we had some issues with the property that, that they, uh, that, that we, uh, owned. And we just had to do a bit of, uh, cleanup on the property to get it in our, in our true name. So now that that's been taken care of, they, uh, yeah, they, they're, we're looking for some, uh, direction on that, uh, request.
Okay, councillor Brent Sampson?
Yeah, the, the, the club meets in Lordways, but I'm familiar with the spot they're referring to because I came across it a few months ago. So it's, there's a, there's a trail leading off of the Smiths Road in Grand River. And what it is, it culverts washed out and, and it's kind of a danger at this point. So people going through have veered off to the right, or depending which way you're coming from, I guess the left, but down below and back up. But especially at night or something, it could be a danger if somebody was to, to not realize or whatever and then, and drive over that embankment. So I, I got the sense from speaking to them that, uh, yeah, it's just they want to make the repairs there and just needed the proper permission to do so.
Any other questions or comments from councillors? No? Okay, so I guess we would, um, look for a motion to, um, allow the, uh, the coastal riders to go ahead and repair that piece of trail. Is that what we're looking for right now? Or do we want to move right to the letter of authority? Yeah, okay. So a motion to approve the letter of authority. It's on the table. Go ahead, councillor Sampson.
I'll make a motion to approve the letter of authority.
Okay, could I have a second on that? Councillor Melanie Sampson?
I would second that motion.
Okay, um, any further discussion? No? Okay, all those in favor? Sorry? Oh, sorry. I thought you said question.
So are we, um, are we giving them permission to use the property or are we signing over their property to them?
I don't, I don't believe it's to sign over any property. It's providing them a le- letter of authority to actually, uh, complete the repairs on the trail now. How the trail got there, I can't answer that. I know, I don't know how it got there and, uh, I don't recall, that coming from council at any point in the, in the past, at any time in the past. So the trail is there now, so I guess, uh, that's the question that we're dealing with now. We're allowing, we want to provide them with that letter of authority. Which, which, um, it's, it's matched off of the, uh, letter of authority that, ATV clubs use when they're looking for permission to deal with property, uh, that Crown owns where their trail runs. So it's similar to that.
Councillor Brent Sampson?
Yeah, from what I understood, it's just a matter of doing the repair to it, um, just so they have the, uh, the authority to do so. They're not looking to own the land or anything like that. It was just, I would guess it's probably an old logging road from some point. I threw there once and I, I don't get the sense it was anything any, that was created in the last number of years. It was probably an abandoned road at one time that got used as part of the trail system.
Okay. Any other further discussion? Okay. Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, guys. All right. Um, so next on our agenda is a review of checks issued. This is, uh, just for information purposes. If there are any questions for staff, um, from council? Okay. Hearing none. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I just have one question and it doesn't have to do with November's checks, but I had a resident ask, uh, why, uh, September and October's checks weren't on the website yet?
Okay, we'll ask staff to, to check on that. Yeah, for sure. Okay, thank you. Yeah. Okay, so, um, so we'll move on to the next, which is items added to the agenda, and we had several items. First one was related to, uh, was it COVID funding? Sorry. It's a regulatory agency, sorry. Um, so councillor Sampson?
Great, thank you. I, I'm, I've done a little bit of, of research and, uh, again, recognizing that I did ask this question a bit. You know, it was later this morning when I asked it, but, um, I'm just wondering, do we have any, uh, policies in place um, that, uh, refer to the actions that municipal staff would take when, um, when, um, a ratepayer or when a, um, consumer of our, let's say, water and sewer system, um, has a, um, a file open with the UARB if they're doing a, so do we have, uh, do we have sort of, um, a list of actions that we will not do, like, let's say, disconnections or something like that, when we have a file open with the UARB?
No, there is, there are no, uh, there are no, there is no protocol with respect to that. However, um, we still, we still, uh, function in accordance with our bylaws and our policies based on, on, on those, on those issues that are, that are brought, brought to our attention. As far as the regulatory agencies, we don't communicate with those agencies. That would be the, the, the function of, of the complainant if they had a complaint, that, that's how they would, so they would proceed.
Councillor Sampson?
Okay, but I would, I would say we do, we are aware when people, when people make a complaint, uh, in regards to Richmond County with the UARB, we are made aware that that complaint has been filed, right? And there is correspondence that happens between both the complainant and the county and the UARB, and, and that process kind of follows until the UARB makes a ruling. So we are aware that, that, um, actions are happening within the scope of the UARB. Like, again, the decision is theirs to make, but we are aware that those decisions are being worked on, if, if that's appropriate.
Certainly, we do get correspondence from those agencies and, and it's based on their protocols. So we, we answer questions based on what they require in order to make a decision on, on, on the, on the matter.
Okay, so, uh, so in terms of disconnection notices, uh, again, um, the policy that I found, uh, today that related to this, pardon me, um, I'm just, I'm trying to find it here, my apologies. The policy, uh, called Water Collection and Connection Policy, uh, it talks about, um, so again, it, this, is this the only location where we talk about disconnections? Is maybe my question?
To disconnect, uh, water accounts? I would dare say that that's part of the bylaw, part of the regulations of, of the water utility.
The policy would not be the, the guiding factor of when we issue disconnection notices. Just, this policy just specifically talks about disconnections and when we issue those notices. So what you're saying is I'm, I probably didn't see the last piece, which was perhaps a bylaw that would have overridden what this policy says?
No, whatever that, whatever that, uh, document that you're reading there would be how we, we conduct our business.
Would be how we conduct our business, okay. Uh, and so again, there's no, as you've already confirmed, there's no reference there to not following that policy or having, um, amendments to that policy based on files being open at the UARB in regard to the accounting question?
No.
Okay. I would be open to conversation, but, uh, just to be, uh, upfront, what I'm looking for here is that council make a motion that while, uh, files are open at the UARB, uh, that we do not proceed with, with disconnection actions against, tho- those parties. Like, while tho- while those files have not been closed by the UARB, that we basically stand off, uh, until it's settled.
Okay, I think we have a motion from councillor Melanie Sampson on the table to hold off on disconnection notices for files in front of UARB.
May I interrupt there for a second? I, I don't, I don't know if that we can make those decisions, uh, if they are regulations within, within the water utility. We can make suggestions and, and perhaps, uh, make application to the UARB, to see if we can change those or add to them or amend them, but that would be totally their decision and not, not, uh, likely something that we could do through a motion of council. We could make, we could, I, I suppose we could do it to look into it and maybe create, uh, you know, a change to the bylaw and then present it to the UARB for their, their approval. Because ultimately, I think it would be up to them whether or not they would allow us to do that.
Deputy Warden Digna?
I just want to, uh, interject for one minute. I, I believe, uh, I believe, I don't know if it's going to be clarification, but, um, I believe the rule that Melanie's reading now states that, uh, upon, I guess, uh, though, upon a written letter, uh, it's a nine-month, um, a nine-month wait, I think, before a disconnection process is, uh, is to occur. The, uh, I guess the person at question was only given so far four months or five months and received a disconnection letter.
I'm sorry, councillor Sampson is, yep.
Um, no, um, deputy Warden, I would say that, that this is not, this is a general, uh, comment that I'm making in terms of, like, I, that may be the ca- that may well be the case, but my concern today is that when we have a file open at the UARB, do we have the, uh, ability to not disconnect while those files are open, period, in general, not necessarily related to anything in particular, just in general? Um, and so, um, you know, I certainly am, again, learning, thank you, CAO Marshawn, like, I'm just, uh, I just feel like, uh, I, I just need more information, I think, in terms of where we find that. So perhaps over the next couple of weeks, uh, you could help me, you know, find where I'd find the information for that and how we could go about making that, um, possible, if it's not, if it's not possible through a motion of council.
Certainly within the power of council to put a motion on the table to, um, to amend a bylaw in such a manner, uh, you know, within the scope of, uh, I guess, with, you know, with the approval or, or of the UARB, um, as a condition of that, right? Sorry, deputy Warden?
Yeah, no, that's fine. I was just going to, uh, I was going to say the same thing. I'm, I'm sure council has the, um, I don't want to use the word power, but they have the control to, uh, you know, I guess, suggest or, uh, recommend through the, uh, proper channels that, um, that we do have that in place. In the meantime, I would, uh, I would hope that we, uh, that we could, I guess, make a recommendation that, you know, or, uh, a motion that we do hold off on any disconnections until we hear back from, I guess, the UARB. I don't see that being a problem, um, con- considering that we make the, uh, I guess we make the decision when to connect and disconnect. We shouldn't have a problem with making a decision to hold off on a disconnection or a connection notice. Um, well, correct me if I'm wrong, but does the decision to disconnect somebody's water not come from the administration staff? Correct. So obviously, right, no, that's what I'm saying. So obviously, the administration ha- staff also has the authority to hold off on a disconnection notice. So I would, I guess, like to see, since we're in limbo right now, waiting for whatever, I would like to see our administration staff hold off on any disconnection, um, I guess, process until we hear back or we can amend the bylaw that we're looking at.
So councillor Sampson, you had put a motion on the table, um, yeah?
Yes, again, my motion was put on the table in, in regard, it was more about stating what my case was, I think. Uh, and so I think, you know, what deputy, if, based on the conversations that have happened since I've made that comment, I, I would, uh, withdraw the motion and I would allow deputy Warden to make a motion in regards to, you know, making a recommendation to staff about how we would proceed with disconnections when files are before the UARB.
Go ahead, deputy Warden Digna.
Yeah, um, so I, again, I would, uh, I would like to put a motion on the floor to, um, maybe confer with, uh, or refer with staff to hold off on any disconnection that are, I guess, in place right now until we can have a sit-down with the, uh, UARB board. And, uh, hopefully.
Until a decision is received?
A decision is received.
Okay, okay, yes. Okay, yeah.
Yep, that's all.
Okay, so, uh, could I have a second or for that motion? Councillor Sean Sampson?
Yeah, I'll second that motion, yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, all those opposed? Okay, motion carried. Alrighty, um, so the next item on the agenda is, uh, related to COVID funding. Uh, so again, councillor Sampson?
So I've been giving it some, uh, a little bit of thought, um, in regards to, uh, the effects of COVID nineteen on many of our not-for-profit organizations in Richmond County, uh, and that it's really impacted their ability to raise funds. Um, and those funds are so needed for them to maintain their operations. Uh, and so, uh, upon reflection of supports that have been provided by, uh, the federal government for both people who are struggling through the pandemic, uh, and businesses with, um, uh, with specific costs or payroll, um, and, and even the, the, um, uh, the funding that we've received as a municipality, uh, in terms of the Safe Start program. Uh, and so I'm just, uh, I'd just like to open the conversation, I think, um, of the possibility that as a municipality, we may be able to help out some of our not-for-profit organizations, um, through some type of funding. And a- again, I'm, I'm working through some of the details in my mind in terms of what that could look like. Um, but I would like to, you know, to just, uh, sort of have a discussion at the table in terms of it's, whether it's something that we may want to start gathering some information, um, from staff in terms of, you know, like, how many not-for-profits would be in, in the area, like, what types of costs could we quantify? Like, I'm just thinking, you know, water and sewer bills that they may be incurring, uh, from the county, um, or, you know, other types of non-deferred expenses. So just trying to get a sense from, uh, the folks around the table is in terms of whether or not this is something we want to talk about further.
Any other comments or questions from councillors? Councillor Sampson?
No, for sure. I, I would welcome a conversation, uh, to that matter on, on, on funding, you know, during these difficult times. I'm sure some nonprofit organizations have, you know, that can't fundraise and, and, you know, uh, can't do the normal things that they do from year to year, uh, you know, are struggling. So I would welcome that conversation for sure.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Your mic is lit there, Melanie? No, we're good? Okay. Okay, um, so are you asking for, I guess, um, uh, staff and str- staff, uh, effort on this at this point, or?
Y- yeah, I mean, I, I guess I'm just thinking, um, it's something that I spoke to the Director of Public Works about, you know, a few weeks ago in terms of maybe getting a list of, of what, uh, groups that would be under our tax exempt. You know, either, either they're under bylaw fifty-six or they're, um, or they would be exempt from tax that would be on, let's say, the municipal water and sewer systems as a starting point, because those would be some sort of non-deferable expenses. They have actually premises, that they have some costs. Uh, and so I, I just feel like I may like to start with that. Um, and then, you know, maybe add it to the agenda for the ne- in the next couple of weeks. I, I think, you know, nine eighteen, we're getting a bit long in the tooth and牙, but perhaps as a conversation for a regular council meeting.
Okay.
So, um, just to, just to make further comments on, on those two particular, uh, items that you added, were discussed regarding the water and the sewer. Uh, sewers charged by, by, by bylaw. And, uh, so any changes that would need to be made to that bylaw to accommodate anyone, uh, would have to be done at that level. The water utility is, uh, is, uh, obviously a utility and, and it needs to get paid, so, uh, there, there are no exceptions when it comes to the water utility. You can, uh, perhaps indicate that you may want to do something with a bill, but someone has to pay it. So, um, there's no room for, for any type of relief when it comes to water. The utility really has to be paid.
Councillor Sampson?
Uh, and, yeah, and that's not really what I was, I was thinking. What I was more thinking was that in the same way that we provide grants in lieu and do a jour- you know, do a journal entry where we basically are paying the taxes for the other organizations, that we may feel that under these, you know, times of COVID nineteen, that we decide we want to provide some funding to NPOs. They may not relate directly to their water and sewer bills, but I think that those are items that are within our scope of understanding the price tag of those, uh, and that, you know, it, it would be something definitely out of budget, but COVID nineteen has taught us that we've got a lot of things happening out of budget. So, um, that's all, and I would like to also investigate a bit of that safe restart fund. So that's another thing I think I would like to get a little more information on, would be, you know, what are the rules and regulations around that funding? Like, what's it available to be used for?
Okay, uh, councillor Brent Sampson?
Yeah, that's what I kind of understood from it as well. It would just be a way to possibly provide some kind of grant funding to some of these nonprofits that may have several different issues that could come up right now and just because they were a little bit handcuffed over a long period of time as far as fundraising and regular events went on. Um, yeah, I just understood it to look into any ways we could possibly help in, in, in some way, shape or form.
So, just to clarify on the Safe Start amounts, um, earlier, earlier this year, we were, we were, uh, petitioned by Nova Scotia Federation Municipalities to, uh, fill out a a form to, uh, provide proof of what potentially we may lose with respect to the COVID, uh, nineteen pandemic. And so we, we filled out, we filled out, uh, an application and determined how much we would, uh, essentially, uh, what it would cost us in the form of rentals, fees, loss programming, et cetera. And, uh, that amount, uh, was provided and, um, so those amount, that, that dollar amount that was provided is, is earmarked for that now. We don't know exactly, uh, what the criteria is, uh, related to, uh, allocating that money. Perhaps the province may- Perhaps the province may indicate that we may have to pay some of that back, perhaps. We don't know, depending on what we use it for and how we satisfy their requirements for that money. Although, we don't have any money budgeted right now in grants. It could be something that we could look forward to in budgeting deliberations to provide an amount in a grant fund, because we currently have none.
Any other comments on that? Okay, so Counselor Sampson, are you feeling like that brings the topic to a close or are you seeking a motion?
Yeah, now I'm just, you know, you've got me kind of thinking, like, I'm just wondering if it's more appropriate then that that conversation go to budget deliberations or whether or not a further conversation could be had at council in a couple of weeks and then we may then move it off to budget. I'm, I'm just not, to be honest, I'm not sure. Sorry. So I'd be looking for, you know, thoughts from other counselors in terms of what that could look like.
So counselors, do you think further discussion at next, the meeting in two weeks would be warranted or would you rather see this put off to budget deliberations or?
No, I think it's a great idea to put it on for, in two weeks. It'll give us time to look at it. In the meantime, is there any way to find out from the province what the criteria that they were looking for? Obviously, we had to fill out an application for the money, so there must have been some sort of criteria where the money is permitted to go. It might give us a, you know, might give us an idea of where we can actually allocate some of that funding.
Okay.
I don't think the option there is for council to allocate that money. I think that the money was provided based on the shortfalls that we identified. And so if we've identified those shortfalls and they've provided us with that funding, if we use it for those shortfalls, then they'll cover those either increased expenses or loss in revenues. Anything that we can't justify will probably have to be sent back to the province.
That was just an estimated, I guess, or not an estimated, but I'm going to say a well-estimated or approximation of funding, though, when we applied for it, correct?
I'm not really sure how the province determined the exact dollar figure, however, we had some components, obviously, that, that were involved due to some of the things that we did, or that council did. They deferred interest payments back in, back in April when, sorry, in June when the tax bills were due. We deferred tax payments and did not charge interest for one full month on sewer water and tax bills. And that was a decision of council, I believe it was in June. So that, that made up some of it. Just to give you an idea, loss in revenue from the arena, loss in revenue from programming, increased expenses related to ensuring the safety of patrons at our facilities was also included as, as extra expense. And they provide, they provide an opportunity to allocate money to transit, sort of things of that nature that I don't have exact dollar amounts on everything, but it was more so in a, in a pool of resources, a pool of funds that they allocated towards us.
Okay, so I'm just, I understand part of it, and maybe, maybe it's me that's confused, but several weeks ago, when I brought up the, you just said loss of funds from the arena, but several weeks ago, when I brought up the arena, it was stated that we actually saved money by having the arena closed for an extra month. But now we're stating that we had loss of funds by not opening the arena. So I guess that would be my number one. My number two would be the, we just had a discussion about not being able to make any adjustments to the water or the sewer. But just in the same comment, you said that the last council made a motion to not charge any tax. So would that, or any interest, sorry, would that not be part of something they would have had to go through the process to, I guess, to have clarification or?
Interest charged on a, on accounts is a, is a, an amount that's approved by council. So the interest rates are approved by council, but we still charge, we still charge interest in subsequent months. So we, all we did was defer to the due date.
Okay, that's fine. And as for the Richmond Arena, then that's kind of just?
Well, it was actually, my comments were loss in revenue, so that was, that's the way we explained it, we lost revenue.
As opposed to a net, right. Okay. Any other comments, questions? Counselor Sampson, were you looking to make any kind of a motion? No, no further? Okay, so I guess we do have a general consensus or I, maybe I'll check, do we have a general consensus to add that item to next time's agenda? Yes, okay, that's great. Thank you, everyone. Okay, so Counselor Sampson, I think it was, adding the Lundrigan Lane, thank you.
Yeah, so, I mean, when it comes to Tony and Heather Sampson and the Christmas tree for, for Boston and sending them a letter of recognition and a letter of congratulations, I'd like to see the same thing done for the Lundrigan Lane group. I mean, I don't know if anybody here has witnessed it or gone down the lane for, for a drive, but I would encourage anybody to go down that lane. It's, it's incredible what goes on down there and the hard work put in from these volunteers. So I would like to see a letter of recognition sent to these people for sure. And also during the lighting at the East Ridge Richmond, it was also said from the volunteers there that they were going to donate their funds this year to the East Ridge Richmond Foundation. So there is a, an account that the credit union set up, or you can e-transfer a donation to lightuplundrigan@gmail.com if you want to support their cause. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. So I think we could look for some general consensus about on giving a letter of recognition, if that's okay with everyone. Happy to do so. I may ask you, though, for some assistance in getting that letter to the right people. Okay, all right, thank you so much. Okay, next on our, item on our agenda is related to C B U and a letter of support. I do have some copies that I can, I'm just going to ask you to pass down, so. This is what you emailed. This is what I emailed, so, and for those who don't have it digitally, I did just print out a couple of copies. It's a two-page, one-pager. That's the way all my one-pagers are, two pages. So just kind of, it's a follow-up to the presentation we received last month from President Dingwall. Counselor Sampson, thank you for doing that. I kind of was thinking a relay race, not a one-man race, but that's great, thank you. It is a follow-up to the presentation we received last month from President Dingwall. C B U has reached out directly seeking a letter of support for the Center for Discovery and Innovation. They've provided this one-pager to follow up that describes the new center as essential for creating the exceptional learning experiences that our future medical professionals, engineers, and scientists need, and as a state-of-the-art, modern research and instructional facility that will attract the brightest minds from Cape Breton Island and around the world and give them an opportunity to stay here and work here. So I guess at this point, I'd like some thoughts from counselors on passing a resolution that demonstrates council's notional, not financial, support in issuing this type of a letter. Any thoughts, any comments? Deputy Warden?
Yeah, no, I, I just got to say, I was, I was completely impressed with the, I guess, with the, not going to say performance, but with the, but I almost liked it because it was, they put on a great, a great presentation from C B U. And, yeah, I think, I think it's a great that they're reaching out actually to Richmond County for a letter. And I, I 100% support sending them a letter of, you know, approval or recommendation or, I guess, recognition or?
Okay, it's Counselor Brent Sampson?
I'll second that.
Yes, it is a resolution, so I've just, I've just shared a draft resolution text with, with Deputy Warden Digtin. So they are looking for resolution and that resolution to be referenced in a letter of support. I should have been more clear about that from the, from the beginning. So I heard you second, Counselor Sampson, but I wasn't clear that there was a motion, so I, did I miss that? Or how did, I must have missed it?
Yeah, no, there was a motion.
Okay, I apologize for that. Right, it was a motion for a letter of support. So, sorry, Deputy Warden, your light was on there. So did you want to, did you want to continue with that motion or?
Yeah, so I guess we can.
Could we support it through a resolution?
We can support it through a resolution.
Okay. Could I ask you to, to read that?
Sure.
Just the italicized piece there.
On the bottom?
Yeah.
So whereas C B U Science Building is more than 50 years old and aging labs and infrastructure once used to educate the parents and grandparents of Cape Breton's youth, whereas C B U is enabling the growth of Cape Breton's population for the first time in more than 20 years and needs modern, state-of-the-art research and teaching facilities to continue recruiting local, Canadian, domestic, and international students to study in Cape Breton. Now therefore be resolved that Richmond County fully, fully supports Cape Breton University efforts to establish the Center for Discovery and Innovation. Furthermore, please feel, oh, we'll stop there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So could I have a second or on that resolution, please? Thank you.
Why not? I'll second that one as well.
Well said. So any further discussion on that matter? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone. Okay, so next item on the agenda was related to the Accessibility Committee, or I guess accessibility in general. And it is just to provide some background information to council to bring this to our attention. In September 2018, the province released the Government of Nova Scotia Accessibility Plan. This plan outlines specific actions for achieving an inclusive response of an accessible workplace for Nova Scotia public servants and ensuring our services are accessible to all. According to Stats Canada, about 30% of Nova Scotians age 15 and older are identified or identify as having at least one disability. It's, I think, the largest percentage of any Canadian province. It's nearly 230,000 Nova Scotians. In 2017, Nova Scotia became the third province in Canada to pass accessibility legislation, committing to a more equitable, equitable and accessible province. The Act recognizes accessibility as a human right. Municipalities are mandated to do their part by establishing an accessibility advisory committee and developing an accessibility plan within a year. The Accessibility Directorate recommends that we appoint a staff member to support the work of the Accessibility Advisory Committee, including the development and implementation of the plan. Public ad, in the past, the C A O was able to provide me with some background information. Public ad was put out for members-at-large to sit on such a committee, but there were no respondents, which is similar to what I've heard from some other regions in Cape Breton Island. You know, there is a strong connection with the accessibility legislation to buildings in our built environment, so a potential role has emerged for the Eastern District Planning Commission on this piece of work that needs to be done. From the last meeting of the Planning Commission, Counselor Sean Sampson, you and I were there and, and there was some discussion. And so Eastern District Planning Commission will be reaching out to determine interest in a regional approach. So perhaps taking on a role that would serve multiple municipalities in that. And their, so their staff is going to be, I guess, begin that anew since the council elections have concluded. So I would invite comments from counselors on this, on this approach and on that matter. If, if anybody has any questions, this was more informational at this time, but just wanted to put it on the radar. Any comments, questions? Okay, so hearing then, I'll move us to question period. I think that, that wraps up our regular agenda items, so. Any questions from the gallery? Did we exhaust the gallery? I think we exhausted them. No, yes, absolutely, please come.
Some people are. You may be on mic.
Yes, thank you, this has been a long one. So welcome, I'll just get you to, to let us know who you are, you'll press the red button and?
Robbie Fugere from Petit Le Gras.
Great.
I have two quick questions, I don't need answers.
Fabulous.
No, my questions are not meant to be answered, they're meant to be thought about and maybe cause you to think of some topics that you discussed tonight, because I understand that I can't discuss anything else, so. First one is 9A sewage testing for COVID, I think it's a great idea. I'm wondering if you guys are thinking of maybe applying for government funds to do that. There are all kinds of programs, I watch television quite a bit now, and they announce new programs every day, funding for this, funding for that, and you never know, there might be funding for sewage testing in Richmond County. Or if they don't have one, they put a special category for it. So I don't need an answer to that. Item number seven, you spoke about bylaw policy committee, and I'm wondering, or my question is, are you considering adding members-at-large on this committee? And I don't need an answer. Thank you very much.
Counselor Brent Sampson?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for your questions, those are a couple of good points to consider.
Counselor Melanie Sampson, did you have a question? My understanding is that there are, there are members-at-large on our policy advisory committee. No, that's wrong, sorry. There were, okay, sorry. And that was, okay, yeah, all right, perfect.
You were on that policy committee before, right? You were on that policy committee?
I was on that policy committee.
Definitely worth, worth looking into, thank you.
No, no, it's good.
Absolutely, thank you so much, nice to meet you in person. Okay, so that concludes our question period for this evening. And I think we'll now, I'll now accept a motion to move us in camera.
I would make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Melanie Sampson, could I have a second or on that? Counselor Sean Sampson?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? No?
Question?
Those in favor?
I'm asleep now.
Those opposed? Okay, motion carried, so we'll move in camera. We're going to take a little break, though, thank you.